So included in your packet are a couple of items. You have a copy of the draft general fund budget with projected activity for 2122, which is the fiscal year that we're currently in. Fiscal year 2223 recommended, which is next fiscal year. And then future projected, which is basically the the recommended for 2324, which is two years out. You have revenues and expenditures for that. You have, you also have documents related to goals objectives, which we had talked about, but never took action on. So we can start with kind of just going through the memo that can precede it all of it. For goals objectives and things that we kind of know and have talked about for this figure 2223. In 2223, we have the August and November 22 elections, which is reflected in the elections budget. And then it's reflected in 2324 to go back down because we don't have two elections planned anyway. This October will have, we'll start union negotiations, which will set the union staff increases likely for the next three years. And then we have the Second Street project going on right now, which we expect to be complete before the end of the fiscal year. And then as of July 1st, for the new fiscal year, we'll start the Third and Broad Road project. But those will be reflected in the road fund budgets when when those come at the next work session meeting. And then we're anticipating the completion of renovation of this building and us making the full transition from the office currently over here. Some topics that we had talked about before and wanted to bring back for discussion and some of which or most of which have been incorporated into the current draft budget. Are making some improvements to 8140, the fire station. For the upcoming fiscal year, I believe I put 40,000 in there for next fiscal year. We have been budgeting 1,000 in building improvements, but if we're going to do anything of substance, that number is going to be substantially larger. Even if it's for the sake of, you know, we know that even if we were to build new, there's going to be a time period where the firefighters are still going to be occupying the current building. And after getting a list from from the DAFD and talking it over with Dan, Tim and Kurt, there are some, there are some improvements that should be happening there that are that are our responsibility.
I'm sorry, how much did you say? 40,000?
40,000. And Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, we talked about apparently some of the windows are rotting out. There are some doors that need to be replaced. A bunch of electrical stuff. One of which Kurt is getting a quote to upgrade the panel in the main office area. And we're, he's, he's waiting on a response from DAFD to let him know exactly what all are plugged into outlets in that area so that way they can appropriately quote out what type of new box they would need. And then other other miscellaneous electrical stuff that needs to happen. And so some of which was noted by my OSHA, some of it wasn't.
Yeah, some stuff we're doing with that as well too. So we're able to do what we can, trying to single point there. But obviously, you said bigger stuff we got to. If you get into big logic, that's, that's all our. I'm sorry.
No, no, that's, that's good. We had talked about previously potential for adding a fifth DPW employee. A portion of that employee would be included in the general fund split between DPW Downtown Public Works and Parks. And then part would be split by roads and the solid waste. We've talked about, we want to continue our annual tree trimming. Tree trimming program, we're targeting downtown, the original village neighborhoods for next winter. We just wrapped up. We just wrapped up Dexter Crossing here on Farms. So that's, that was the next biggest priority that was that was identified by the DPW next area that needs it. But we also know that there are a significant number of larger trees that are going to have to come down because they're either dead or dying. Which is unfortunate, but those are are some big costs. The the bigger the tree, the more expensive it is to take down. And we know that there's a bunch that are going to have to come down. We've talked about connecting the trail to through Brand New Commons to bigger out to Grand Street. And we've been told that Grandview Commons is expecting completion of their section or that that area in spring of 2024. If we want to get in there before they are done, so that way they don't, that way we don't have to reconstruct anything that they've already constructed. Then we'd want to get it done before. Which means it could still be in 2324 if we did it like in the fall of 23 or late summer of 23. But right now I'm showing it in 2223. But that's, that's one thing that we may want to discuss.
Jamie is not joining us, her daughter's sick.
We've also talked about the Milk Creek Park Playground project that Parks wants to do. And and upgrading that playground. They have started to narrow it back down to the playground. It started off in playground and it blew up a little bit. And now it's, it's kind of whittling back down to priority number one in that park is is the playground and finding a way to get a sidewalk down from Main Street into the park. Smith Group is of the opinion that we could run the sidewalk down the kind of like if you're looking down the driveway in the park, we could put a sidewalk on the left hand side. It would not meet ADA, but they think that that might be okay because we have the ADA connector on the other side of Main Street. We have, we have the switchback. So those are kind of the two big pieces of that project. We've talked about looking into kind of a comprehensive update of the general code ordinances in a similar fashion to the zoning ordinance. I imagine that we're probably going to want to take a little bit of a break once the zoning ordinance is adopted, just kind of shake that out of our system a little bit before we, before we get into the next, next big project similar to that.
If it gets adopted.
We've, 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 we've come a long way and spent a lot of hours for it to die on the vine. Marie, Michelle and Josh had been looking into a combination of CIP and budget software. They did interviews with a number of different firms and the one that they were the most impressed by is called ClearGov. And basically it offers a a budgeting tool wherein our staff can go in and work on the budget as as a group. But also you can post kind of the final documents online through through their website. And it's very interactive and has all these kind of kind of cool interactive features that the public might appreciate. But at the same time, it the the CIP feature also feeds into the budget software. Whereby you basically create these projects in the CIP software, set them for different fiscal years and then automatically move them into into the budget, which is, which is interesting.
Forecasting tool that's pretty powerful and hopefully replace my 20-year-old spreadsheet that's very competent.
But that's, that's been included in the graph budget. The implementation, there's a little additional cost for implementation, but the the bigger cost is the annual and this place of subscription service. Next year, we are going to, in the next fiscal year, we're going to want to do our OPEB actuarial, which we're hoping is going to give us some very positive results and maybe will be over 100%, which would be exciting.
Wow, come in. Oh, yeah, we changed all of our assumptions.
So sorry, back to the budget software. Is that 16,000 the annual or is that the initial?
That's, that's the combined subscription plus implementation for the first year. I think the second and third years are 14,500. I know we're not, we're not there yet, but I included some roads topics just so they didn't fall off. We had talked about quite, quite a few items over the last couple of months. Including getting a new radar sign. Looking at bicycle lane paint for Central Street. Connecting the Forest Street sidewalk or the sidewalk to nowhere. Filling in the Dan Hoey sidewalk gap and at the last meeting, we just had our ADA parking spaces discussion follow up. When we have come back for the the road fund discussion. We have pages and estimates for for each of each of those that are listed.
Justin, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Maybe I'm topic, but the bicycle lane paint, has it ever come up in discussion? I mean, I know we've discussed Central Street and that makes sense, but has it ever come up in discussion? But we don't have bicycle lanes the whole way of where the border to Warped Road next, do we? Sorry, I'm not finishing sentences.
No, we are not on Main Street and not all the way down Broad Street.
Okay, so we couldn't, my thought was, could we do it along that? But it, we don't have the lanes that we can't do that.
I believe Broad, Broad Street or the Third and Broad do incorporate bicycle lanes, if I'm not mistaken, that the the design for that project has those. And so it would just be a matter of incorporating, of continuing them down as we finish off Broad Street.
I just feel like that would help people know where it's supposed to go because I think that people have questions about that and signs are kind of small.
Yeah, and and we don't, I don't think we have it in the design for line striping or for for line paint for for the bicycle lanes on. That's something that we can look into.
The reason it came up here is that there have been folks who said after the improvements on Central, cars are going a lot faster because it feels wired.
Yeah, I've heard that and I think I was here for that. Just another thought pop in my head. That's all.
While thoughts are popping in, I'm going to say this for collective memory purposes. Whenever we do a road project with an adjacent bicycle lane, we should make sure we don't allow them to do an asphalt seam right smack dab in the middle of bicycle lane. Because that's where it starts to break and then we'll eat bicycle tires. You're already starting to see some gapness on the central.
Like, like between the the asphalt and the concrete curb?
No, between their one layer of asphalt and the next layer, it's right in the middle of the bicycle lane.
And and I imagine that that, you know, if that gap is wide enough, that'll end up on Kurt's crack seal list.
Well, see, so a couple of years, usually that's when it starts to get the cracks on.
Yeah, but you don't want to ride a street bike with a bunch of tar right in the middle of where you're going to go. So just for design for future execution.
And then I think after, after some discussion with staff and OHM, we're, we're going to get a report from OHM about kind of the the current status of our phaser ratings. The condition of our various roads and cost estimates for various sections of roads. But I think we might be looking at trying to do Dan Hoey in next fiscal year. In addition to Third and Broad, so we might be shooting for Dan Hoey in early 2023.
What part of Dan Hoey?
Ideally, both sides.
Both sides of the new circuit.
That, 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 that would, that would be the goal. I'm not done with the roads funds yet, but we know that that's a huge, huge area that that needs to, although actually in thinking about it, it needs to happen after, after schools let out. So it would have to be somewhere of of 2023. Moving on real quick to utilities. We're engaging OHM and other corporate contractors for quotes to do an updated utility rate study. A water reliability study and we're also investigating what it would cost to install security badges and security badge readers for water wastewater and DPW. We know that we're likely going to have them for for this building. And so we thought it might be appropriate to look at all of our other facilities as well. But there are potential grants that that we might be eligible for for that work.
When was the last time the utility rates study was done?
2016?
No, wait a second, 1213.
I would say the last of the matter, I mean, every year, but the full rate study where they did the the TAPB structure and all that down.
Yeah, that's probably before that even.
But the water reliability you want is every five years.
So that's actually a question. Last time we did this, we actually saved some money, used a lot of stuff that counts.
Yeah.
So it went from like 17,000 down to like 6,000.
Yeah.
So we, I think we'll go 6,000 there. We have a lot of it since it's done in the past, we got a lot of information there.
And I think with the, with the rate study, one reason why it's kind of important to do this now, the last time we had the rate study, we were growing. And now we're not. It's not like we're that, so we're a different scenario now. That is easy to keep in house with the future.
So kind of moving on to page out of page two. You can see there that you know, we're, we're looking at potentially $600,000 revenue over expense this fiscal year. And that's due to, due to quite a few things. Vacancies in staff for, for, you know, a good chunk of time. Additional stabilization payments. We factored those in for this budget, where we're still not guaranteed on May, but we're thinking it's, it's, it's pretty likely that that we're going to get at least something. Removal of contingencies and we are receiving more than expected state shared revenue. A pretty good chunk more and a lot of that is due to the census and our population. So they're basically back paying us for shorting us since the census was fired. For general fund revenue. We're anticipating the general fund mileage to go up by about 113,000. And then an additional 1.4% in fiscal year 22 or 2324. We're looking at at higher, at, at the state shared revenue remaining fairly the same as what we're projecting for this year. This current fiscal year is the last year for the current formula for local community stabilization. So that's, that's a big, next fiscal year? 2223.
I was just going to use the current event.
And after that, it's, it's a big question. So we'll, we'll budget conservatively for that.
I believe we'll still be held harmless on our public safety pillar talks, which different form that they use for that is this second payment is what we get paid.
And the DDA is getting close to paying back all of the things that the city has, has forwarded on their behalf. And so that those payments will start dropping off. For expenses. All of our vacant positions are currently filled. We're budgeting that that will continue with current staff in those positions. We're wanting to do the OPEB actuarial study, the elections, we were talking about trees. Our, we also know that our Washington County Sheriff's Office contract is coming due. And we'll have to enter the negotiation with them probably by the end of the year. That'll be my first time participating in those discussions, but you know, the, the sheriff has always been really good to work with. So I imagine that that's not going to be a terribly difficult process unless we are looking for something different out of that. The costs associated with the AFD went up quite a bit this year. We're projecting that, or we're budgeting that they're going to go up by 5% effective January of 2022. January of 2023 and January 2024. Which are fairly significant jumps. But that's based on what DAFD is projecting that we're going to be at this current fiscal year and the numbers that they've given us to budget for next. Union salaries are going up by 3%. We're showing an average of about 3% for non-union staff as well. We're looking to continue with all of our current car timers. Our MERS assumptions. Were anticipating that they're going to continue that our payments to MERS are going to continue going up until about 2027, 2028. And then they drop, drop down significantly. That's again, based on their current assumptions and, you know, current actuaries and all that. So we'll see, we'll see whether or not that comes to pass, but we're, we're doing very well with MERS, especially when compared to a lot of other communities. We got our
That's for the fine benefit.
That's, that's correct. Yep. We received our ask from WAVE and that's budgeted to to stay flat. Then going on to page five. You'll see a number of items, some of which we were talked about, but adding in the fifth DPW, we've budgeted to do that. We've budgeted for building improvements to 8140. The purchase and implementation of ClearGov. Community garden is going to be back in full swing. The DPW is looking for what has asked for a outdoor storage shed. The way Kurt described it is it's not actually a shed, it's more like a, like a cloth enclosure. We, we don't have quotes on that yet, but I've put 50,000 in the budget as a placeholder. And that's split between multiple different funds with 15,000 of that being included in the general fund. Holiday wraps, we budget for that every year. In just figure 2223, I've included the Grand Street Trail Connector. And in 2324, I've included 200,000 for Milk Creek Park Playground project. If council wanted to, you know, move that up or wanted to pull from reserves in order to get that done sooner. And we have the the potential for 600,000 in revenue over expense this year, which means we're adding potentially 600,000 to our fund balance in general fund, which means we, we could plan to draw from that next fiscal year if that's what council wanted to do. We're investigating a new phone system, which actually we're hoping will save us money. But Josh is in the middle of of that process right now.
Justin, can I start a question?
Yeah. Yes, so like, like our Comcast phones now.
Okay, because we need one bottle of it. So just keep that, because that's
Yeah, yeah, and then, and then, and then actually, then I believe that comes through AT&amp;T.
I wasn't sure, I just wanted, I didn't know if you
I'm, I'm, I'm kidding.
Have you picked a vendor or are you?
No. Yeah, we're, I, I, I think we're, we started looking at what type of phone system we need. And the next step is to issue an RFP. The current budget also assumes that we're going to be keeping fun air in person this year and next year. We've already started the process for plan air for this year. Our registration is open. We've started getting things in order for the children's workshops, the adult workshops. And all of that. And then we're assuming that the we, that we haven't received the request from the senior center yet, but we're budgeting that that's going to be flat, which is already a significant increase over the previous fiscal year, the one before the one we're in. I think it went from, you know, a couple of thousand up to 16,500. But they're looking at at the formula or that they looked at the formula for how they divide costs. And basically said, you know, or something like 30% or 50% of their users are city residents. And so they've asked for the appropriate cost. But it's also mentioned that they're looking at a millage ask for recreation, which could include funding for a senior center.
All right. Are they collaborating with this school board?
That's, that's my understanding is that there is a group that has been developed to investigate putting a a millage ask on the August bat.
For what?
For, for a recreation. So with that, does anybody have any questions or any place they want to start conversation?
So you said the salary is unbalanced yet?
In general fund, the salaries are pretty close. Okay.
Not a big one, but since it's relatively recently discussed in terms of technology here. Are we able to make improvements to this 2,000 square foot per four building instead of spending $50,000 on a cloth? Structure.
So potentially. There are, I, I know, I know that Kurt has, has some challenges with getting all of all of the in there. One thing that like Tim and I have discussed is, you know, if we're looking at making improvements to this, maybe it's pulling off the second floor. And just putting a roof right on top of the brick, on top of the, the concrete. maybe it's pulling off the second floor and just putting a roof right on top of the brick, on top of the, the concrete. Because then you remove the posts in the middle, which are a barrier for Kurt, getting the equipment in and out of there. So there, there, there is potential for that, if that's
What about the face of it? Down there? I mean, I don't know what he's trying to store because we haven't talked about that, but
He's got some all the places stored right now, stuff that he's it's, it's outside still.
Yeah.
I think he likes this, but like Justin said, the inability to just try to get things in and out. It's kind of stuff more we're talking about. Take that off. Even if it's a metal roof or something like that.
But it's not anything that we can use that ramp and that door on the other end of the building.
They have right now the election trailer that's in there.
Oh, okay.
And, and that also only fits one, basically one vehicle. Maybe because there's also posts there. And so you basically have to pull down the ramp and just straight in. It would be tough to like pull in and then go off to the side. So it, I, I, I think that, that there are other things that we can store. I think there are other things that the DPW can store down there and in the barn. Even if, so like even if we were to improve the barn. You know, the DPW kind of a just miscellaneous junk that I miscellaneous equipment that, that, that could be sort of there. So
This is currently outside.
I think it's something sitting outside.
Yeah.
But that, that, that is one, one thing that, that we could investigate is what, what would it take to make that, you know, truly a, a, a good spot for you know, DPW vehicles? And one thing might be adding a second bay door.
As I said, didn't partner or something like that at all?
They, they, they didn't really investigate that.
That is one of the answer concerns. You should mention something called that. So I, I tell you right now, my experience, those things, the stuff, it's it seems like they always give one door and I worked in other that had more of a door against much easier things and I don't put stuff away. And with that, put the roof or something like that, the other side or something, whatever. It's just something to drive through.
Well, that's what I was going to say. Well, I don't, I would, I would think I would think that to Zach's point, you know, that was required with the full idea that it would be stored, right? I mean, at least near short term of our history, since we nobody had divisions that has another set of offices, right? Right? So I think, I think having the access for vehicles off of here on makes like heck of a lot more sense than it does trying to maneuver stuff in the parking lot, which people try to come in and out potentially. I mean, I would I, I think that should be looked at. I liked the character of the two story. I'd rather, I know the stairway up isn't usable or accessible or it's very, you know, it's very narrow and tight. But I mean, I don't think you could that could be reworked or modernized so that you could get stuff up there that you want.
I mean, even if you kind of, if it was, I mean, you go up there, it starts to sound just a rough offer to throw stuff. Real fine. I don't know how much it costs to me. Like that size, you know, they do this. Well, that being said, I think the big thing was the ability inside the post. So
What, what, what vehicles are this Kurt thinking, you know?
Sorry.
What vehicles is Kurt thinking about?
About putting here? Um, well, if he could get the leak machine, there he would, but I don't think that's going to happen. But it's got also the, the hot hatch machine. Um, you could put the stuff in there for like the season stuff, like the sweeper could be put away there. Winter time and would you get in that more room?
Yeah. So, so seasonal stuff.
Yeah, basically, yeah. So.
Yeah, okay. And then I imagine we'd also move like all the Easter egg stuff and all the paint dexter stuff and
The water, the old things, whatever.
The, the, the DDA barricades.
There's a lot of value to having this core footage. So I would if we do it on this, try to find all sorts of alternatives to keep the second floor.
Yeah.
If that includes reinforcing with steel or something so it can span the distance because that's a lot of square footage that we have too much.
Oh, wow. I think the thing that made it about the structure sound a lot, so.
The the, the one thing that Kurt has been, has been asking for and kind of been delaying is a high wall. Too. So if, if, yeah. So, so if, if we do keep the second floor here and start storing stuff up there, then I, I think Kurt would want access to it. Right now we've been borrowing one from the mill.
The only thing I want to operate.
Just, just got to get you insured.
Or on DPW equipment. I'll, I'll take the opportunity to say, do we have an aerator for the parks?
An aerator like a
Think so.
I raise, I raise it because we had a discussion about the need for weed control in various parks. And if you have one of the lawn maintenance things you can do is to prove the aeration. So nutrients get deeper. So you have thicker roots, so you've got more lush grass. So weeds can't go. So we, you own a fair bit of property. It would be interesting to see if we can get one of those and work it in. I can tell you from personal experience. Unfortunately, we don't have this, but you do not want to be the person who gets to operate it in the cemetery. Because there's lots of things that you're not supposed to hit and run over with that.
Is it, is it like a I'm, I'm picturing like a rototiller.
No, it's generally an attachment you put on. I, I use ones that are on the back of tractors, but I, any sort of by the bobcat even has a thing you can stick on the front.
Okay.
It probably has some two little little pieces.
Yeah.
So that's what it does. Basically it just pulls up a little bit. It looks like a bird. I mean, yes, it just pulls up little pieces. So it gets that aeration and stuff. I don't
One, the best thing that it does is once you're on the green, your maximum two strokes.
Can, can, can kind of in, in line with, with that. Tim has brought up for community park needing something, some sort of in-ground installation to be able to safely access some of the wells. Tim, I don't know if you want to talk about that, like the, the, the pavers. In community park.
Yeah. So we have two wells in the park, obviously. So every fifth year, a well is getting cleared, which is a really great and the two in the park are, are a big problem because one, we're in a park. Two, I, I tried to do it in winter time when it's harder ground, but that park does have a lot of moisture in there and it tends to go on terraced ground. The well four that's down the hill, we had a problem. We took care of that by putting gravel down, rock down. And we were doing that because it wasn't in the park. It was, you know, stuff that was a problem. Well, it ended up turning out okay and it looks good. So what I was thinking was, and I, I got a price on it. I would like to dig down about two feet around the wells. It's it's decent. You know, it's just a sizable area we're talking about. But dig down about two feet, bring back eighteen inches of gravel. And then I think have these paper bricks that if you look as you're going down, Ryan, drive, if you look up to the park, you'll see these little X paper bricks or I'm not sure, but that's where we take the vehicles off. So doesn't hurt the grass and stuff. I would like to get something like that in there and then I would bring black dirt back in there, throw some grass in. So at least we got some kind of seed and grass in there. So that way it doesn't look bad because it's obviously in the park. But by doing that, then when we go to the wells every couple of years, it would take away the women from us tearing up there and stuff like that. Because it's just a pain more than anything. So I've got to get a price on it. But that's, I originally thought about maybe just putting some type of pavement up there. You know, it's asphalt or something, but I, I just think if we do this route, it'd look a lot better.
Good. Community park is, is very wet. And so in the, in the spring and, and fall, it can, you can get the muddy.
Yes.
So to, to help people not get stuck in mud and tear up the grass.
Yeah. I, when I had it scheduled this year, I did it for the end of February. Perfect. Or it's the end of January. That would be perfect. They started growing that some failed and we ended up having to do a little more. And by the time they came back, it's beginning of March. It, it didn't, it wasn't bad. The one barrier wasn't bad, but last year it ran up pretty good. So we had to go back and fix it.
Would it be possible to put some soil on the, the stone that's there behind Wilson? So I, I hear from the folks back there that it has distressed them and significantly impacted their enjoyment of their yards and their their house.
What are you talking about with the stones?
Yeah. So just so that it can hold vegetation, you know, just like in, an inch or whatever. So we're not going to sink in, but it still looks like grass.
I know that's a lot of stone down there.
Yeah.
And we had to put a lot of it. We tried putting some, uh, it's actually our property back there. That's the cool crazy part about it. But yeah, we actually put three pounds of, uh, two years ago or a year ago. We, we were open to suggestions. I know that was one of the things that we're talking about being an issue. I mean, I'll look into it more and see what we come up with. I just, it's a lot of in my take on the sides, you know, um, but that would be a lot. I'll take a look into it and see what we can do.
Okay. Thank you.
Forty thousand for addition of fifth, for, you know, DPW employee. Is that salary alone?
I, no, it's not. So it's, it's, it's salary plus not, 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 not all benefits though. It's like
That's, that's a portion of the salary.
And, and, and it's a portion of the same. Well, no. When, when I did the memo, it wa, I, I hadn't completely finished that portion of the budget yet, but the salary is split between different funds, but I think it's like thirty six to thirty eight thousand for salary split between the funds. Plus six percent for DC MERS plus FICA. Yeah.
Sorry.
So I, I would, I would estimate it'd, it'd actually be around forty five to fifty. But generally the entry level DPW positions are some of the least expensive to the city.
And it's time. There's, there's plenty of work.
I, I, I think we, we have more than enough.
Yeah, absolutely. You take a, a staff of four, twelve years ago. There, it's nice that we had somehow that helps out. But you know, like this is this year, we're going to, it sounds like, like there's a bunch for about six months of the shore. Which obviously that's experience alone, plus a person. So it's, yeah.
There's always so many efficiencies you can bring out.
Yeah. And, and like Tim was saying, when, when somebody goes on vacation or is sick and, you know, we go from four to three and that's, you know, twenty five percent of the DPW.
Do you guys go on vacation?
Looks like Michelle has her hand up. Michelle?
Hi all. I'm sorry. I have to leave because I have another meeting to go to. I just wondered if you had any questions that I could answer as it pertains to the ClearGov requests that we're making.
I do. Does it replace and or play more with our BSA?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what I think was Zach was questioning.
Yeah, it, 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 it doesn't replace BSNA.
No.
It, it plays BSNA.
I'm sorry?
It, it plays with BSNA.
Yes.
Is it the opportunity cost by which I mean other things we could spend fifteen thousand dollars on a year worth it?
In my opinion, it would be the, both the budget document that Marie does, as well as the CIP document that that I have to do are both extremely labor intensive. The CIP document is in, is in Excel and is my biggest fear, and I think you've heard me say this before, if the macros and the formulas stop working, then we have an issue and I have to pay either OHM or Carlisle-Wartman, because that's where Mike is now, to fix them. As it stands, this year alone for February and March, in a very small portion of January, we've already accumulated a number of hours and costs for Mike to help with the CIP. I think it's going to be a very sound software to use to continue to produce the type of document that, or the quality of document that we have done in the past and will need to do in the future.
I got one more question for you on the planning side.
Okay.
Herefore, we've been pretty I want to say non-aggressive with our marketing of redevelopment opportunities, including the Spotify park. Other communities will be more proactive and will actually go out and hunt and bring people in as opposed to just throwing up an RFP and see what comes of it. Do you think there'd be benefit for us doing that? And what resources might be necessary to do that if so?
But we're talking specifically about our thirty forty five Broad Street Properties Act?
That's, that's the big one. Yes.
So the, 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 we could do that. We've done that as part of the RFPs in the past. The primary reason we got no responses for this RFP wasn't because it was a bad RFP. It's, it's just the timing as Jessica, Jessica Gunther and others have indicated it, it's, it's the cost right now of materials. But I have talked with developers, the thirty forty five Broad Street Committee, which you're a part of, has met with two different developers and we are meeting with a, with one of them again tomorrow. I don't know if you've had your, had been able to see your emails yet, but their materials that they're presenting tomorrow. I was able to email those out when I got them today. So it may be that depending on how tomorrow's meeting goes, we may have a partner to again move forward with.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
But I, I guess to build on Zach's question, you know, is there any value in, you know, upping our contribution with Spark to try and get them to do more proactive economic development for us? Or are there any other online tools that we can take advantage of or?
The answer to the first question about upping the membership with Spark to get more, the answer would be no. They are doing as much as they can to bring business to the city of Dexter based on what we can provide for businesses that are looking. I have had conversations with Maureen Donahue Kraus, who heads up the Detroit Regional Economic Partnership. And the types of projects that they are getting from Michigan are many, many tens of hundreds of acres and they want them to have they want them to be serviced by public water and sewer. In Washington County, we don't have that. In all of southeast Michigan, we don't have that. So upping our contribution isn't going to change that situation. Remind me what the second portion of that it, remind me what the second portion of that question was, Ja, uh, Justin?
Uh, any online tools or, uh, any other resources that are out there that we can take advantage of to get our name out there?
Um, to the best of my knowledge, we are capitalizing on all of the ones that we would qualify for. We continue to monitor to see what else we could utilize. Um, one of the things that, um, the DDA will be looking at is part of their strategic plan update, although not specifically, um, targeted at thirty forty five broad, but the city and the district overall is doing more marketing and promotion. So, um, um, I don't know what shape that's going to take right now, but it is something that they will be addressing in this strategic update that wasn't, um, wasn't addressed in the previous.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I do have to leave. Um, I'm happy to take any questions by email and answer them tomorrow.
Bye.
Bye, thank you.
Other, any other areas that anybody wants to tackle?
So you, you've projected that the, local stabilization? That we'll get another hundred and seventeen. That's going to go to three hundreds.
Correct, and, and that, that, that might still be low.
Right, that could be low. So that's just a guess. Is that based on anything or do you just pull that out of there?
Do you use the prior years?
Uh, it's so, you know, for prior years, we're at, I think, an extra a hundred and eighty. So.
It's okay, all right, that's all. That's fine, that's fine.
Yes.
And then, last year we put that second payment aside for the sewer fund, right? And it's still there, set aside for sewer fund, right? So, you know, when, um, sometimes Courtney was real good at asking the question, if you could do something today, that would be really beneficial ten years down the road. What could you do today that would benefit ten years down the road? That was her question often. Not that maybe you didn't have to say a question, but, uh, you know, if, if we truly are going to have a surplus of six hundred thousand, you know, it seems to me that we should consider, one, I think, setting aside a contingency for this thing. Building we're in, since we didn't do that as part of the. And two, putting money into the fire station fund. At least a portion of those. It doesn't have to all be that. But I think, I don't have your memo from a previous meeting or whatever. I think there's a hundred and eighty eight thousand or something in the fire station fund that we've not, not traditionally just budgeted to add to it.
No, no.
But, but, but there's nothing. And, and there's been other places for the money to go, but I, I, I guess I'm going out there and I think Jamie was asking questions, you know, in previous meetings on stuff about, you know, how much can we save? I'm not looking to go to bare bones and do nothing other than try to save every penny for that. We have a lot of priorities and I think if you had a chance to skim through the survey questions and such, there's a ton of different places where people care about. Fire station is one of them, but it's certainly an important one that this board is spending time on. We can, you know, that, that, it's not necessarily, the six hundred thousand dollar surplus is more to do with the current year's budget, not so much the, the budget for the next fiscal year following, we're looking at, but it's always become a discussion point on what to do with that surplus. If we say nothing, it just, it, it flows into general fund in a, in a unrestricted way, which is fine, which means you can use it for anything, but if we wanted to show purpose, you know, if we are going to go for, go for a, a boat, um, for funding, it, I think the message would go over louder if we explained how much we had saved and were planning to save. You could essentially triple the amount in there if you put it all there. I'm not saying it should all go over there, but you could go from a hundred and eighty to seven, seven eighty eight. Well, that's not whatever seven billion and eight million or whatever we're going to need. I don't know what that number is anymore. It's at least a, a step in the right direction. One eighty eight, that's what I remembered too. Thanks for looking that up. But, and we don't have to decide that today. He's giving us a hint at what it's going to be and if that one seventeen number that they're guessing is low, it's going to be more than that. So. We do. Well, that's the other thing I was going to say that, you know, that at the time, yeah, at the time that we, we did that, I was very nervous that the DAFD board was going to make a big decision to buy a bunch of equipment when we didn't have funds at DAFD and the, our apparatus or but reserve account. We've done a nice job of, of building up reserves there because we're coming in under budget there. And that, that money could also be repurposed, although I, I don't, I, I wouldn't want to completely drain it. I'd want to leave something there, I think, just in case we had an overflow on fire side or whatever. Anyway, just something about.
If I may, I, I actually really like that idea of, um, showing that we are also committed, so putting something aside, but, um, there is, there are a lot of other initiatives and quality of life matter stuff at the, for us to consider for our residents that going to bare bone really uh, will take a lot more out, but I do like the idea of us putting something towards, um, more on the fire station fund, um, when possible, when makes sense, um, to show that commitment if we are going to ask for funding from our residents.
Yeah, I, I, just another thing I was thinking about just from a, this is my own. It looks like we've got a, um, twenty thousand dollar draw, the expenditures are higher by twenty thousand.
Yes.
Anyway, you can bring that in budget or, or make it so that it's zero instead of showing the draw and across all this stuff or?
Yeah, I can, I can.
I mean, I realize you're just looking at it for the first time, but it'd be great if it could be balanced as all of it, as opposed to.
I, 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 I knew that, I, I knew that was there, um, and I wanted to be sure that before.
I mean, not that, not that coming in six hundred and one versus twenty, the other way balanced out, there's no, no issue there.
Yeah.
With respect to additional fund surplus, um, I would recommend or throw into consideration planting more trees than the tree from normally allowing the parks. With respect to benefits in the future, it, they reduce, um, stormwater management issues and lots of other good stuff. And even in Monument Park, there are a lot of gaps where there could and shouldn't happen trees. Not only have the social effect, of course. No, 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 but that probably needs a lot of aeration there. Um, but there, there are lots of gaps and most of the trees around there now are maples of some variety, so it would be good to, as we plant, put a couple other species in there. So when the thing comes through that kills all the maple trees, we'll have something. Uh, one, one other minor thing um, I'm going to bring up is for council training budget. I think there's only three hundred dollars in that, and this is a potential election year, um, that's really not training if we have new people assigned to MML or other things to get them up to speed. We may not have any new faces, or we may have three, who knows? Um, this is a four-year, isn't it? Um, the other thing I'm going to bring out, and this is more of a forward-looking thing, is right now our council members, eighty dollars per meeting is near the bottom of the, all the communities I'm aware of in here. It, it's not why I ran, um, but I think if we don't consider and start, start talking about increasing it, it does limit the people who can or are able to or willing to participate. I can go officiate games for hockey and make twice that money in one night. And there may be folks who would be budget limited with us keeping it that low. Just kind of throwing off conversations.
And, and I know that, that, that's something that we've talked about before. If, if, if council is, is serious, we'll want to look at that. We can, we can come back with a comparison for other communities and.
I, I don't think we'd want to go all the way up. So Dexter Township, I know a number of years ago, one meeting, they got five hundred dollars a month, whether or not they showed up. I, I don't think we want to opt to get anywhere near that level.
Get about going fifty percent more than it is or something like that?
I, just even like ten dollars this budget cycle and ten next, just to show that, you know, we're increasing it. Because one of the things from my planning side that I think of, this is especially more the case in townships, you look at the townships and all the elected officials are sixty to eighty years old, which isn't bad, but you want to have the variety, you want to have the mixture and, and folks who are less than retirement age don't have the opportunity, both the time to it. Let's show, show it at ninety, show it at ninety. You don't need to increase the barrel. So, but I don't have any problem with the other ones, so.
Good, going forward, do we want to look at that as, as, you know, a percent increase or just a, a recurring, you know, cocoa increase or something to that, that effect?
Personally, no, I think, I think Zach's right. You probably ought to go up. It's been, it's been eighty since, since I've been on the board. I think it's been the same number for eighteen years at least, or it could certainly go up to, or, or even twenty. I would just program it. Do we, our, our minds fair, were there other words that we were talking about, the trailer compensated or that we didn't talk about? It's EBA, they get money now.
And ACH. Um, parks is compensated, planning is compensated.
Well, DDA would pay themselves, right? That's their discretion.
I mean, that's, that's their discretion.
It, it would be, I would be interested to hear if ACH is something. Because it is a thank you for serving and also I found that boards where people get paid, the people tend to be more serious about engaging and preparing, even if it's ten bucks or twenty bucks a meeting.
We will say ACH is very dedicated about it, but they don't deserve it.
Yes.
Do you just want me to reach out to that or like have an item for that?
Yeah, well, what, what's the?
Parks is twenty. I think planning is either twenty or forty.
I'd make it equal to parks. So it makes sense to this, just make it twenty equal to parks budget for. I suppose if that's how you do it, yeah, yeah. Otherwise, it's probably a lot of work, right? Yeah, yeah, fair enough. Are, are we happy with our meter? I'm going to test that the other day. Happy with meter investments and what they're doing? Still.
Drew might come and give a presentation.
Yeah, that's not.
You know, but, um, we're actually, uh, going to talk. Yeah, overall, yes, I guess.
You mean the inverted curve, is it working for them? We're in a better place than if we'd not.
Absolutely.
And, and especially the, the first couple of years when we first hired a meter, they were doing really, really well.
Unless we're going out four years and, and we're just not smart enough to have that much.
The liquidity is required.
So the big changes in revenue from the, right, columns, for the current year that we're in now, from the amended budget to the projected activity, the big revenue hits, their projections are the hundred seventeen that you have in the
Local community.
Local community, right?
Yeah.
And then. Shared has gone up, state shared has gone up a hundred and twenty almost.
Correct.
Right, those two are the big two. Okay, all right, makes sense. And in terms of, um, Marie, do we have any tax tribun cases pending?
Excellent, okay.
What other, what else do we know about that's new that's in the works that is coming online? How many homes do we have under construction? There's a couple in Westridge.
And there's six.
Five, six and one for five.
It was either five or six.
Yeah, five or six.
The one, the town was going out, and I remember that it's not home to the mains. They've got the A unit that there is.
And that's, and that's really going to help the DDA more than,
Correct.
More than us, because that's a criminal revenue for the DDA.
Millennium place that will also.
But the, the one thing about increasing the revenue on the DDA, one of the discussions that they've had in the past, the DDA has never really paid the city what we spend on them and the maintenance costs. And this year, they're actually, I don't know, what did that talk about? Actually, paying pretty much everything.
We've been ramping it up back.
Yeah, right, which the DA is not able to do without that.
I, I think, I think, and, and, you know, I don't know if I mentioned this as a goal before or not, but I think it's important if we want the DDA to be using their funds in a certain way within that district, that we give them some encouragement. Like if it's the redevelopment of Grand Street or the Trailhead or, you know, truthfully, they could spend those dollars on street improvements and that kind of infrastructure improvements within that district. Which means that the street funds, water funds, water and sewer funds could go outside of that district. I think we should be thinking about the CIP projects that are important for them to be focusing on within their district, you know, so that we don't have to necessarily, if that makes sense. Like, for example, the Baker Road project that you're talking about coming up, there could be a match to that. In theory, we could be at the DDA to think about participating in that match because it's within the DDA district as opposed to our own. Street, just kind of food for thought. I don't know what the priorities are for everybody individually, but.
One, one item that, that's mentioned a couple of times or one. One, one item that, that's mentioned a couple of times or once. In, 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 in the survey, we asked about, you know, are you able to cross the street? One item that was repeatedly a response was Alpine. So that might be an area to look at, maybe some pedestrian improvements. And then, and that could be a D D A. Item as well.
Murray and I were looking at the. She knows that then the March is my favorite time of year because she sent me an updated spreadsheet on Grandview Commons. And. The D D A committed to a. Pledge of the tax increment wanting to help the, to help the payback for. Environmental. Costs associated with the redevelopment of that property, tearing down a little building. Contaminated soils, if there was one, who hold that train car or that good tank or whatever they found over there, all those things. And there was a. A projected. Cost for one, and then there was a projected growth rate for how fast they would build out the buildings. And ultimately a projected payback of like eleven years. Of, of a portion of our tax gap that would be pledged back to pay off those costs. And we set it up so the D D A got twenty five percent. We weren't pledging a hundred percent because we wanted to make sure the D D A was getting some incremental revenue as the growth occurred. But the, the good news is it looks like they're gonna be, um, they're on, they're on track to make that. End around twenty twenty eight, I think it was for twenty twenty seven, one of the two numbers we came up with. Which is way earlier. Than originally thought about. So the, the D D A is long for sure. The D D A is in line to have some increased revenue. Over going forward, which is good, uh, because they've got, they've got debt, debt to pay back, but. It should allow them to have some opportunity to look at doing some things. So I think it's important that we. You know, continue to communicate with them and play nice and try to be on the same page with our goals because I think they could do some things that would help. Offset the dollars that come in through the other tax.
I think the D A was a non player for so long just because they were at just that moment. They had no real extra revenue yet. Now we're positioned to be a player.
Well, when, when, when the D D A agreed to, to borrow, I think we borrowed. One point six million. And then at two million at the same time, one was the project fund and the other was to buy thirty forty five broad. All in the same year, that was two thousand eight. Same year, same year, the bottom fell out of everything. That really put them in a mode of, of. Nearly ten years of payback with the exception of, of the. Substation that they're in to negotiate and help pay towards. So anyway, just something to think about. The community is gonna be that, the D D A is gonna be, I don't wanna say flush with cash, but they're gonna have. Money to, to use the district for sure.
The, the, the other piece of good news too is, uh, we have a bond coming off in road fund in twenty twenty four.
Yes.
Which was eighty to ninety thousand a year.
That's great.
Um, and, and just kind of as a, as a preview for the road discussion. The Pazer map is a little scary. Uh, we have a lot of, especially the, uh. Neighborhood, neighborhood roads are all kind of coming due at the same time. There's a lot of red on the Pazer map because of that.
Well, depending on, depending on which ones they are. And depending on how red they are. You can get a lot of life extension out of a decent resurfacing project. Most of those roads are twenty years old. The curb and gutter should be. Forty fifty year life if it's. Is it all decent pack trees? I just have to say there won't be spot repairs, but.
There's, there, there's a lot of curve in your farms that needs to be, needs to be addressed.
Okay, fair enough.
But, uh, we're, we're at four. Next fiscal year, we're looking at kind of a hodgepodge project of sidewalk replacements. The Edison Street Band replacement or fix, whatever we have to, whatever we have to do there, uh, here on Farm Curve. There's, there's some areas that are just odd projects that. That we could stand to do.
Can we have a good discussion with myself and Justin? Kurt, as far as your concerns and, uh, you guys have a Pazer rate how it's running, like I tried to explain. And we all, even if you have a three in the subdivision. A three in the subdivision versus a three in the normal. Last.
Right.
So many years versus a damn way to get a problem nonstop.
For sure.
You know, and that's why, like we were talking about funds and stuff, we're trying to find ways, trying to get money because obviously these, it's not getting cheaper. You know, things are going up, obviously everything is coming up, uh, with these road projects. That they employ, you know, most is the fact that it's so well traveled and, uh, you know, you have. Some of these subdivisions have been addressed already within the last five or six years. And it's not that they're not addressed right now, you know, that they should be, it's that we have done something. Okay, it's gonna last a lot longer than before, like I said, with the other roads. So that's why we sat down and talked about various areas that we would talk.
When's the last time we saw the Pazer rates?
Two years.
So maybe if, if, if you got updated once or you're getting updated.
Yeah, they did. Oh, they didn't give it to you. They, they had, but you said.
That might be a good thing to get in front of the whole board here and then, um. I know we always talk about having a wide demand street committee. If you've got some ideas on the next several years projects. Let, let this board at least see the, see everything first and then it makes sense to have a street meeting. Well, to carry things forward, at least that group should participate a little bit.
I will say one thing, I said before, I used Roadsoft before I got here. Roadsoft is, is, is a great platform, okay? And being over in Milford, they had, they actually put a road model in front of people and they got turned down because it was tight. So there's ties. Very close to losing at the end of it, but they turned around and took the road soft legs, can, you know. Uh, put forth what it needs to put forth and pass flying colors. Because what it does, what it shows everybody that doesn't really have the knowledge of it, it's one of the rules. And I mean, these guys are gonna see this on the stuff that I'm still, and that's, I, I think that's interesting that we got, which I'm sure everybody in council. You know, like the public. And they can see how it's, it's, it's quite impressive, I think.
Well, we, we, we were in a mindset, and I think we still are, of, of trying to keep the good roads good. You know. Think sure we're doing preventative maintenance on the roads that we just reconstructed. In fact, if you're talking about a seam on the. I know it's not desirable to sit right, right over a. The tire, but you wanna keep that crack from opening up anymore than it already is, right? Because that's really what your tire contract did, or so that just a little one, but. The last one, the road miller, or not the road, the road bond that we put out there. We did a quite a, quite a bit of resurfacing and, and good preventative maintenance on a large chunk of roads. A lot of it was in the. Old village, I guess. And it's, we did the cave seals and stuff and some subdivisions. I know that wasn't super popular, but it's drastically extended life. It's drastically extended the life of the roads. And, um.
And, and, uh, you know, O H M was putting together basically a report, uh, you know, what, what we were able to do with, with different roads. And, uh, we gotta, gotta get a preview of that report and, uh. Kurt went with Tim and Dan and rode around in the different subs and, uh. You know, recommended O H M maybe, maybe looking at what, what they're on. As a, as a possible alternative to a, to a full depth resurfacing.
Yeah, and he's done a quarter, around what we did in the most of the park, especially considering the area.
Justin, I wanted to ask you one more question on the general fund. This is. All of our revenue projections are based upon. Same, is it ten point eight nine, five seven or whatever it is? It's the same military for, for general and then you plan to use the same for street. Total of fifty point three or fifty point four or whatever. And you're right, fifteen point, fifteen point three zero six two or something like that. Yeah, okay. Alright, so that's, that's the most, is there anyone in council that wants to raise the village? You don't have to answer that now. Typically, we've tried to keep it the same as best we can. We are, you didn't have any comparison here of where we are to, like our headly. Cap. Okay, well, when you get that, I'm obviously interested in that, just so we know. You know, what we have available, should we want to think about that? I'm not saying we have to do anything with it, but. So for at least know what those are.
Yeah, for a new budget, the headly cap is even though it says our military can be fifteen. There's a state mechanism that pops it down. It says not really fifteen because. You, 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 you're.
Yeah, it offsets the property value, that's right.
Yeah, that's right.
That's why I was asking about new development, because new development doesn't count against that.
Right.
The new houses that come online or the.
Anytime, any, any addition, which is a new house or, you know, an addition or something like that, does not count towards that. That new record is all market, market.
Driven, so like when a house gets sold, that affects the other rollback.
But, um, um, on the military, in the past, we have. Played with the general fund operating the roads mileage to, you know, bump one up a little over the other one, somebody comes out. Is even across the board.
Depending on the priority.
Depending on priorities.
The road one we bumped up last year. Yes. In order to do the, uh, Dexter process. This isn't proposing to reduce it back to what it was. Right?
Correct. Well, I mean, we, we haven't. I, I haven't done the road fund yet, but. I would, I, I would show it as remaining where it is and then if council wants to, wants to reduce it, we can, we can run those numbers.
Personally, I'd like to see it drop back as part of our promises. We're doing it to do this one and these other ones interjammed in. Now, if there are other projects that we need to do in order to, to take advantage of that stuff. Or from keeping it up. Just personal preference.
Well, and, and I think we had, I think we had popped it up when we were looking to do, um, Brandon Hudson. Uh, I think, I think we, we're, we're only going to be able to do. Brand it, but we bumped it so that way we could also throw in Hudson at the same time, if, if I'm remembering correctly.
Justin, I'm good. I think it's a pretty good, good job from the first round too. You guys have any questions or you want to call it or? We're able to talk about air raiders at a budget meeting in a pretty good shot shape. True. I can always count on you for a new idea too. That's good. You had mentioned that before previously, I don't think so. By the way, we have, are there, are there, you can ask, are there, nah, go back to the park thing. Are there ways? Like, are we still fighting crabgrass or did we decide not, we're not doing certain things because of applications to keep the grass grass?
I think Kurt did some. I'll have to talk to him again, but I would guess some estimates and it was.
Four, four times more expensive.
Four times more expensive.
To do what?
To get more environment friendly, what they were talking about.
Okay.
You're still gonna get, like you said, the graduate gases, stuff like that, but it's more expensive.
But I'm okay with more expensive, pet friendly and stuff. Are, are we gonna get a report back on what that is or how that's been here? If we're, if we're actually making a change?
Yeah.
Or is it not, is it not, or is it not substantial enough that I need to worry about?
It, 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 it may not be, you know, a, a significant percentage of the overall budget, so.
I think I'd just like to know what we're doing. So if somebody asks me, say, yeah, we are being more either pet friendly or environmental friendly.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we're still, we're still investigating.
Okay, alright, fair enough.
I still think boats, man. Wearing some boats.
I, 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 I mean, we, we, we could make it an event where like, you know, two or three times a year, we bring the goat title.
I had a goat.
Okay, because the male goats aren't.
Oh, no, you don't, you just keep thinking of the past.
Exactly, you have to find fixed those or coats.
Yes, no, the road, you've touched one of those and you're gonna smell like it for four days.
And do we, I've been asking, do we have, um. Money is budgeted for like board replacement, boardwalk replacement?
Yes. Yeah, that, 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 that's just part of normal.
Alright, because I never have to be doing that every year, you know, it's coming up on the season where it's easier to do it than.
Yeah, and, and actually Kurt, Kurt has been working on that. We, we, we did more walk placements last two years, I think it was. Um, and we already talked to Kurt this year and he's gonna set aside some time to, to go back out and.
Okay.
We're gonna roll the floor. Um, last year we did, we were able to complete adding caps on top of each of the boardwalk posts.
Yeah, that was good.
Uh, so hopefully it'll extend the, the life of, of those posts.
I still think that it makes sense to get somebody, figure out if somebody can get the logs that are jammed up under the. Boardwalk that goes to the connector. Out of the way, I'm happy to put waiters on if someone's got a whole thing. But there's, there's a significant amount of, of buildup. When you come from, um, Mill Creek Park onto the connector, the concrete portion of the connect, you know, it's back there that goes to Wardog. Right at the transition where it goes from Pet Creek to Wardog. You look down on the left-hand side, there's all sorts of large logs and storms we've had that are piled up against the. The, the superstructure, if you will, of the boardwalk. And, um, there was a lot, there was a time when Dan was able to get somebody, Ellen J or somebody.
It was Ellen J.
Somebody would be able to get out there and back those loose and either have them float away or.
There, there, there were also a couple of years where, um. There's a volunteer group led by Anna Bertravam and, and that, that was doing woody debris management. Uh, where they, they go out with kayaks and chainsaws and.
Like I said, I mean, I'd be happy to go in there and do something. I, I can't do it by myself.
Yeah, I'd go too. That's right.
I climbed down, I climbed down the hill from the bank, from the railroad tracks to get a closer, and I, I could push them, but I can't, I can't move them off of that. I tried, but I'm getting in the water. I just, I just think the forces of that are underestimated. It's out of sight, out of mind, but that, you know, it's not designed to have.
Side.
The side laterals, yeah, right. The water's supposed to be bioluminescent and stuff, so. Right.
And, and I, I know, like, I, I would, like, we, we actually even showed Ellen J to ask them about that and they. Put us off and put us off and put us off because they were so lazy.
I know you're trying, so I just, just a reminder, if we could ask somebody to get.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think we, we have a list of companies and maybe we can reach out to. Start to try again.
Everybody okay? Oh, yeah, you still have a question. Sorry, Murray. I forgot, go ahead.
Is council comfortable with the goals and the result sheets?
I am. I'd like to vote to who, whatever is appropriate as part of this process. There's some of them that could probably benefit from, uh, updating. Can't think of anyone right now.
We, we can, we can spend some, so I, I, I went through and, and spent some time. Probably a couple of months ago now on the spreadsheet edition. Um, I don't know that all, all of those changes got, uh. Translated onto the, the written version.
The senior center contribution.
The senior center contribution. Only got a thousand penciled in here.
Yeah, so let's do it all, let's all give it a good read through. Um, Justin, are we looking at next Wednesday or? The eleventh, two, I think in two weeks for our next meeting?
Probably two weeks.
So May eleventh then would be our next workshop, go over water, sewer, streets and all the other. The little fun, this latest revenues, whatever else, solid waste, sure, I'm missing something, but.
Yeah, they, they, they put in trees.
Yeah, alright, exactly.
Solid waste, water, sewer, roads.
Okay, well, let's plan on the eleventh, and if you could add that to the calendar. Maybe we could, could you send an email out to Jimmy and Vol and Tyler?
Yeah.
Just remind them that that's your target, does that work okay for me? As best I know.
I'm gonna be an actual township.
I'll, I'll, I'll send out, I do the poll. Okay.
Another investment, since we're getting onto the bigger equipment, potentially, is, um. My understanding is we've got the variable speed aeration pump. At the treatment plant, that was. Noticeable savings for electrical costs, this might be the time to look at doing the other fellow. Uh, if we have found money, for lack of a better description. Sorry. At the, at the water treatment plant, maybe six years ago, seven years ago, we put in a, um. Variable speed aerator pump, pump for the aerator, I think the other one is still the, the solid state, it's on or tough.
Water treatment.
Waste water.
Waste water.
Waste.
Okay, would it be up to you six years ago?
Yeah, maybe not six, but maybe he's right, it has been six.
You talking about the blower?
The blower, blower.
Oh, okay.
Aeration blower, yeah.
Yeah.
Blower.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a good cost, but yeah. There's a couple other things and then we discuss, Justin and I in here that. Some big issues that people have more expected. But you're right, that's the big jobs.
Okay, everybody, thanks for participating. Thanks, have a good night.
If, uh, if you didn't, if you didn't have a chance to.